Thank you for coming to this candidate's forum, and I thank the candidates for coming to this forum. This forum for the City Fargo Commission election is being provided to you by the League of Women Voters, which is a nonpartisan political organization, and our role is to encourage, inform, and active participation in government and to increase understanding of major public policy issues and also influence public policy through education and advocacy. So our thanks to the League of Women Voters. And our thanks to the candidates who are before you this morning. We ask that you hold any reactions to their comments until the end where we will give them all applause for their attendance. The format this morning will be that each candidate will have two minutes to present an opening statement explaining why they feel they should be elected to this position or this seat in the commission. And then following that, we will have questions and answers from the audience, and each candidate will have two minutes to respond. And we'll then have, at the end, we will have a one-minute summary statement from each candidate. So with that, I would like to open our candidate's forum with opening statements, and I'm going to call on Mr. Vern Bennett to start.
Well, thank you very much. Appreciate the League putting this forum on. It's very helpful to each of us. I thank each of the spectators for being here, and I appreciate also the League being able to make this available to those that are not fortunate to be here today. I spent forty years preparing for this, twenty-eight years as school superintendent and twelve years as Cass County Commissioner, and I think that my experience in those areas will allow me to pour some light on subjects and problems of the city of Fargo. Legally, I'm running for the city commission, but realistically and factually, I think I'm running for the citizens and taxpayers of the city of Fargo. I feel that way. I've spent my life serving the needs of others. I love to do that, and I'm successful at that. I like to listen to people. I like to look at opposing positions. I look at every problem as a pancake. It has at least two sides, and I like to take the best from each side and convert that into a solution. I think that what we need is commissioners that are servants, commissioners that do not feel that they're anointed, commissioners that have a strong and aggressive attitude towards fighting crime, to preventing the deterioration of neighborhoods, that are good at understanding the needs of transportation infrastructure, whether it be highways or whether it be roadways or whether it be rail. I'm supposed to stop. Thank you.
Thank you. I will ask Mr. Tim Mahoney to speak.
Well, thank you for this opportunity for us to get together. I'm excited to hear the other candidates and find out what's going on in Fargo. This spring was great for all of us. I think we all enjoyed it. My son missed sandbagging, so to help me out, one night he left the hose on outside, and I kept hearing the sump pump running, trying to figure out if we were going to have a flood again, and realized that he left the hose on right over my sump pump, so he missed the flood so bad. I've had a very enjoyable time being on the commission. I'm very proud of what the growth Fargo has had and continues to have. We have the infusion of youth and energy that's helping us grow into healthy, energetic community. I think that the One Million Cups that they're having in town is really fun to watch. You have a lot of young people get together and try to figure out what else can we do in this community. When we go through the challenges we're having going forward, flood control has always been a big issue. I don't really want to see flood insurance go up. That's one of the issues that we have. No matter how long the diversion takes with the flood insurance issue, it's going to cost more to live in Fargo, and we're going to have to make sure that doesn't happen. In addition to that, we have some of the greatest growth we've ever had. This year, we're going to have over 750 million projects in the city. We have developers that are anxious to get going. We have a community that wants things to happen. We have to be careful how they do that and where we do it. Downtown has had nice infill. We have older neighborhoods that have infill. What are we going to do in South Fargo? Where are we going to have our growth and development? How are we going to do it for the safety of the streets and how we're going to build our infrastructure through it? The other issue that I've become concerned about in being on the commission is we're now a metropolitan city. We have really grown to a bigger city. We're in game day. We're a noted community throughout the nation. People know who we are and what we're about, and we have the trials and tribulations with that. We have great fire. We have great police. We have great people, but it's going to be difficult to manage this city as large as it's getting to be. So I think we have a transition that we need to do, and that is to grow as a metropolitan area and face the challenge of that. I hope I can serve that position well.
Thank you. And now Mara Brust.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters for having us. It's wonderful to have this kind of opportunity to connect with the voters. Thank you all for coming. Fargo is a magical size. It's big enough to have things cooking, but small enough that people know each other. This description by Jackie Brookner sums up perfectly why I adore my home city. Growing up in Fargo, my childhood was enriched by the numerous opportunities that Fargo has to offer. I took skating, tennis, and golf lessons with the parks. Devoured books from the public libraries. I attended Trolle Performing Arts School. I was educated in our public school systems, and then I attended NDSU. After receiving my BA in Journalism, I left Fargo at the age of seventeen to attend law school at the University of Virginia and to intern in DC. Virginia Law had students from all over the country, but I was definitely the only one from North Dakota, and I heard every Fargo and North Dakota joke in the book. But as a fourth-generation Fargoan, I remained an ardent defender of my beloved home city, and the news from back home only affirm that. Fargo is topping charts of the best places to live. The Bison made the big dance. In 2009, I watched out in horror as the Red River threatened our beloved city, but my overwhelming feeling was one of pride and gratitude as our community rallied together and neighbors had each other's backs. A magical size indeed. Ultimately, I just couldn't stay away, and in 2011, I moved back to Fargo. It's clear that something magical is happening right now. New businesses are springing up. New community events are forming. The startup community is thriving. Bison is making national championships. I knew I had to be a part of it. I'm currently an attorney economist and a principal dancer with the Fargo-Moorhead Ballet, so I'm not afraid of hard work. Both ballet and law are marked by hours and hours of dedication to see the final result, and I'm eager to put in the time and the effort to get results for Fargo. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll go to Scott Wagner.
First off, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters and the fellow candidates. I think it's great when we see, you know, seven individuals that are running for the Fargo City Commission. I think that type of diversity of candidates and different opinions only enriches the process, so I thank them for being involved in this process, too. And also to the individuals that are here and those that'll be watching on public access. I think that this is a great forum for getting information to the voters, especially in a really compressed timeline. I'm used to running on a county race, and you've got a primary and you've got a general election, so this is kind of exciting and fun that you have about six weeks to an election, so instead of seven months. I think, as we all know, that Fargo is at a really opportune time. We've had incredible growth and prosperity over a number of years, and with that has come some unique opportunities and challenges. And I'd like to take my background and experience and put that to work for the citizens of Fargo. I've been a strong advocate for local government. I served three terms as a county commissioner, twelve years, and came up against term limits. There's term limits in Cass County, and in 2012, I was term limited. During the time I was on the commission, I served three terms as chairman of the board. I chaired the county building committee. I was also a member of the diversion authority board for three years while I was on the commission and also was active in a number of legislative issues. About thirty percent of the revenue that runs the city of Fargo is intergovernmental aid, and our relationship with the legislature, whether it's infrastructure, state aid, or flood control, is critically important. And having served as former president of North Dakota County Commissioners Association and chairing their legislative committee, I'd like to bring that experience to the citizens of Fargo and the Fargo City Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we'll have John Strand respond.
Good morning, everybody. It's a very humbling experience to serve the people, and as I'm looking forward to this campaign unfolding, I think you'll have a sense of what each of us would deliver to the seat of the city commission were we to be elected to that. My background is I'm from a little tiny town out there, Crystal, North Dakota, way up north. The reality is, a lot of Fargoans are from little towns out there, and we're at a crossroads in this state, and there's a lot going on. Our situation isn't one so much of problems but opportunities, and managing the opportunities, managing the growth, managing the people issues. If I get the opportunity to serve further, I'm also on the school board, and if I'm elected, I would finish that term. I wouldn't run again. But if I get the opportunity to serve, what I would deliver is a passion for the people, a passion for what's good about a community, a passion for the values that are important in small towns that we're all from and that translate to the bigger city here, Fargo, which really is the flagship of the state of North Dakota. I went through a process this last year on the school board where I was chair of the facilities planning process, and I learned a lot about Fargo, its demographics, and its needs. I think I'm going to translate it this way. When I was a young kid, my mom was mayor of Crystal, and she treated it like a family. She cleaned up the town. She spruced up the place. She got people getting along. She took care of what they got and gave them a sense of value and a sense of being in the right place and taking care of each other. I'm a fiscal tightwad, I say, and a social liberal, so I've learned through life to squeeze every nickel, honor the money that comes to us and that's in our existence, but also to fight for the things that are important for people. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you all. And now we're going to go to the question and answer part of our -- oh, before I go there, I must remember to read the statement for Mr. Garrick. Anthony Garrick was not able to be here, and he asked us to read this statement, so I'm reading it word for word. "Thank you to the Red River Valley League of Women Voters for putting on this event, which allows citizens to get to know the candidates better. My name is Tony Garrick. I was born and raised in the FM area. I attended high school at Shanley, and after graduation, I attended NDSU. I earned my degree in history education in 2007. Before leaving high school, I joined the North Dakota Air National Guard. Being a guardsman is actually the reason I am unable to attend this event, as I am currently in New Mexico finishing pilot training. The Guard is my full-time career. I am honored to serve twelve years so far. My wife, Rachel, attended UND and is now a lawyer here in Fargo, and we have a son named Jackson. I'm running for commissioner in order to bring a sense of balance back to local government. Currently, we have a collection of commissioners that basically agree that high taxes and spending increases benefit our city. I think most people would be surprised to learn that our budget has grown by ninety-six percent in just the past ten years, while our population has grown by only thirteen percent. The math doesn't add up. That is why it would be my goal as the newest commissioner to be the voice of fiscal responsibility and transparency, and I have a very simple three-step process for achieving this. Step one: Ask, is this the role of local government? If the answer is no, it should be thrown out. Step two: Ask, is this a need or a want? If the answer is want, then further debate is required. Step three: Ask, is this the most cost-effective way? If it is not the most cost-effective, we must engage in due diligences to lower the cost. If a proposal can make it through this matrix, then it is good for the city. Fargo is my home. It is where I was raised and where I will raise my family. I want to see Fargo thrive as it has over the past few decades, and as a city leader, I will ensure responsible taxation, frugal spending, and dedication to the residents of Fargo. I hope everyone will take the time to find out more about me at my website or come see me on Facebook. Good luck to all the candidates, and I look forward to the spirited conversations to come regarding Fargo's future." Now, we will move on to the question and answer, and we have some very interesting questions to put forward before you. I think I'll start with a general -- there's about one, two, three, four, five people that have asked a similar question. I'm going to paraphrase them into one single one, and it starts this way. "Are you concerned about rail safety, and if so, what can be done to impact safety? Is oil transport around or through the city the best, and thoughts as to safe resolutions such as building tracks around the city? And are we prepared in Fargo for a train disaster like the Castleton explosion?" So that is all on their minds, and we will start with Mr. Mahoney.
It's a very good question. We have eighty trains go through this community that carry oil. This time, it gets pretty dicey if we do have an event that would happen. Be assured, our fire department has had special training for this. I actually went out and assisted Castleton when Castleton had its event. We do have hazard and hazmat people that are designed to take care of these events. We are working with congressional delegation and local and the state government as well to look at better ways to have safety. I think our congressional delegation, as you know, had an event in Castleton this week and talked to the Transportation Secretary. There are real concerns about this, and there are safety-type of oil tankers that can be made as well that are much safer for the community. I don't think they would fund a bypass of rail through the city. I think we have to figure out how to handle the rail that comes through our city. And one of the surprises when we told the congressional delegation is how many millions of dollars of oil go through this community on a daily basis. Also, from the Castleton experience, we discovered how volatile this oil is. The assumption was that it was not that volatile, and the reality is, we learned a lot about oil and our Bakken oil during that disaster. I think the nation's attention is on this right now, and we will address it. The city is very aggressively working with it. The mayor has been part of the task force as well, so I'm comfortable that we will have a safe community, and we will address the issues of rail safety.
Thank you. Mara Brust.
Thank you. As Mr. Mahoney mentioned, I think we have great local first responders and that they have received specialized training on this issue. And I also believe that the solution needs to come not only from Fargo. We can't address this alone because, obviously, the rails are not only particular to Fargo. So I think a solution needs to come not only from our local government, but from state and federal government, and so I hope to see them working together to make sure our railways are safe.
Thank you. Scott Wagner.
Thank you. Very important question. I think, obviously, what happened in Castleton's has shed a light, I think, not only on regionally but nationally in regards to safety. I think it's -- what's been stated by the other candidates, I think it's kind of correct. I mean, BNSF, they've got a right of way. You've got federal lands with the actual rail lines themselves, so the federal government and our congressional delegation are going to be critical in terms of bringing awareness, safety, and what can be done on the transportation of, you know, oil through our community and these types of tankers. What you saw in Castleton, I think, the issue of the first responders, one of the things that we've done, you know, the time when I was on the county commission in the early 2000s, and I think it's something that's benefited our community, not just when you have a response like this, but other natural disasters or man-made disasters, is the collaboration of our first responders. Our emergency services are co-located between the county of Cass and the city of Fargo. And I see, as we move forward in managing not just growth, just this issue, but any other potential emergencies that might come up, that collaboration, working together in partnerships. When I first got elected to the county commission, we had -- our dispatch centers were -- everyone had their own, and we consolidated that in the early 2000s, created joint dispatch would help with emergency response, and then the training. Another critical component is the state and the Department of Emergency Services, and they have encouraged us, and I think we've been catalysts here in our region, of collaboration and working together to make sure that we have the best possible response services possible when these unfortunate incidents happen. Thank you.
Thank you. John Strand.
That question is so timely, and we're fortunate that we have the opportunity to look at this need and this situation before something happens that is catastrophic. I'm frankly petrified by the risk that's associated with these oil tankers going through town at the rate and the speed sometimes they're going. I believe the Castleton incident happened on December 30th or so. On December 19th or thereabouts, I emailed County City Commissioner Mike Williams. I said, "We've got an issue here in town," and this is before I knew how volatile the Bakken oil is and explosive it is. But yet, we knew from Canada that when it happens in a city, the disaster that is impending. I emailed the city commissioner and filed a complaint that we had trains -- I was watching an oil train go through town that was loaded with oil going east, I'm guessing at forty miles an hour. And I asked, "What is the speed limit for these trains?" And I couldn't even hardly get answers to it. And I asked, "Who regulates the speed of these trains going through town?" And I was looking at this and going, "This is just disturbing and frightening." So we have opportunities. We have to. We have no choice but to look at this in every way we can. And one of the thoughts I would put on the radar to explore is routing the tracks around the city and taking the routes that were the tracks into the center of the city and make those arterial egress and ingress routes to the downtown, which we also need. But we have no choice but to protect the people and to do our level best to be proactive about this and to speak loud and clear that we're fearful and that we're going to do our due diligence to make sure what happened near Castleton or up in Canada doesn't happen here in Fargo.
Thank you. And Mr. Bennett.
I think safety is something that needs to be on the minds of every commissioner in every decision that's made, whether it be neighborhoods, whether it be highways, whether it be intersections, whether it be bike paths, ways to school. Safety is number one, and that's the first consideration. And as far as train traffic is concerned, I attended a meeting in Castleton on last Thursday where Secretary Anthony Fox was there, the Secretary of Transportation. We also attended a meeting at four o'clock on that day where we talked about highways and highway safety and highway funding. I was able to have a personal conversation with Secretary Fox where I'm convinced that he is going to be very helpful in taking care of the safety needs for transportation in our area. And we had such a conversation that we even discussed the fact that we were kind of brothers, kinship, in that he's born in North Carolina. His father was born in North Carolina, and my father was born in North Carolina. And so I think we've developed a great relationship here in North Dakota, in Cass County, and in Fargo with the Secretary of Transportation, which is going to be good for safety in terms of rail and highways.
Okay, thank you. The next question, there's so many good ones. I'm going to bring up kind of a general question here because we have some new people on the board, and it'd be interesting to see. I think we're starting with Mara Brust on this one. And basically, the gist of these questions is, does there exist or is there a partnering relationship of programs between Fargo and West Fargo city departments? And how would you see the relationships between Fargo, West Fargo, Moorhead improving, and what should be done about that? So Mara, that's your question.
Thank you. I think it's very important that the commissions work closely together in developing solutions for our community because you usually don't hear just Fargo here, the FM community. Most of our programming is related to the three cities, and I think it's very important that we work together.
Thank you. Scott Wagner.
Thank you. Very good question. I think with the growth that we've experienced, and once again, I mean, we've started -- our growth has been probably, you know, at least a decade, decade and a half in the making, and it seems that it continually intensifies, which I think is good, a vibrant, growing community. But with those challenges, we recognize those over a decade ago. While I served as a county commissioner, and as I mentioned, when I first got on the board, we did all of our dispatch separately, which I think today is a foreign concept. We were the first multi-jurisdictional dispatch center that crossed state lines into the state of Minnesota. And that helped with our emergency response. We're better serviced, and we're building one infrastructure. We co-located emergency services between Fargo and Cass County. Also, the diversion. As a member of the diversion authority, one of the county appointments was the city of West Fargo. So there's a West Fargo representative. You know, we have the fifth-largest city in the state, the second-largest on our side of the river in the metro, and we felt they needed to be a part of that process, and they were appointed to the board also on the area of economic development. And why that was important, especially when we first started, I believe in a collaborative approach to government. And when we were looking at incentives and things that communities were doing, we shouldn't be islands among ourselves, and we need to promote ourselves as a regional economy, especially in our primary sector. So when I first got on the, what was called the Fargo-Cass Economic Development Corporation, you know, five years later, we expanded that to be the Greater Fargo-Moorhead Economic Development Corporation. And what it's done in another area that I think, quite frankly, that is fairly exciting, if in fact it can come to fruition, is as West Fargo deals with its water treatment issues, the potential capacity to work with the city of Fargo as it builds out additional infrastructure to actually buy that service and save the taxpayers of West Fargo and the city of Fargo by doing that type of collaboration. So we've done a lot in the past, and I think there's many things that we can do in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. And John Strand.
That question leads us down so many paths, and it's insightful that that question exists because it's not just about the city. It's about every government subdivision that we have between -- among our broader, greater community with, it's West Fargo and Fargo and Moorhead. You know, there used to be quite a divide physically between them, West Fargo and Fargo. Now you don't know the difference when all of a sudden you're going from one community to the next. And so we are one, and the left hand and the right hand are connected in the middle, and the middle is the people. So I think that, you know, we've seen the Visitors Bureau combine. The membership led them to that, the Chamber, for example. And we've seen the DCP combine and merge and join forces, and the membership leads those types of things. The people expect us to be working together and partnering. As a school representative, what I've noticed in the past, and yes, we have joint meetings of the city and the parks and the school, but staff meet all the time, yet I believe there's a need for more collaboration at the elected office level where the decision-makers are leading the ship, driving the ship at the helm, not just necessarily maybe reacting to what the staff is doing, but that's good. So there's a lot to this question, and there's a lot of opportunity for us to take it to deeper, broader levels of working together and recognizing each other, honoring each other, learning from each other. You know, there's even situations, you cross the river, people even have different rights, things like that. Quality of life, respect for people, the dignity of people. So it's a good question. It's an insightful one, and one that should be in the forefront of anybody who's serving the people.
Okay, thank you. And Vern Bennett.
Well, it's important to work successfully across political boundaries. As superintendent of schools, I had great relationships with the city of Fargo, great cooperation. As a county commissioner, I had great cooperation with the city of Fargo, and that's what's needed. This needs to be expanded into Moorhead and to West Fargo. I'm a firm believer that in order to solve problems, the public needs to talk about problems. In order for commissioners to solve problems, they need to talk about problems with other political boundary officials, Moorhead-- boundary officials, Morehead, West Fargo, and others. And so, this is very important to have these discussions, not only to prevent problems, but to promote progress.
Thank you. And Tim Mahoney?
It's interesting. We already have some areas in which we do work together quite nicely with, through metropolitan areas. There's Metropolitan Council of Governments, which basically works in transportation, bicycle paths, the city, where we're going and what we're going to do. Recently, there was a concern about which project we should have as a priority, and Veterans Boulevard was put up there by West Fargo. So, there was good thoughtful discussion by the group, and the group came together and decided where the priorities would go. But we have representatives of all three cities on that council that decide where we're going to go on transportation needs of the city. The relationships with Morehead are very good with the diversion project, and we work very closely with them on those issues. West Fargo has a challenge right now, and we have it with the water plant. Should we expand our water plant and help take care of West Fargo's needs, or should West Fargo build a separate water plant? When people talk about being fiscally responsible, and many of the members, candidates would understand this, West Fargo can build a new water plant for quite a bit of expense, or have less expense by having us expand our water plant. So, which would be the better idea? So, those areas, we do collaborate with each other and work with each other quite well. The city and the county have always had good relationships through disaster draining, through a variety of different things that we do together, so there's very close collaboration. In addition to the position of city commissioner, we meet with the park board and we meet with the school board as well to look throughout the city of how we can collaborate. And for the citizens, a lot of times, it's how do we save some money or not spend money on something. One of the priorities of the city is to make this a walkable, livable community that people enjoy and have areas that they can do things with. So, there's a lot of collaboration that has to go through all three cities to have bike paths throughout all the cities, to have areas and developments that have growth that kind of complement each other. I think we're all aware, this school department, they had some issues. Vern, you'd understand that too, where West Fargo, some people live in Fargo, but they actually go to the West Fargo schools. So, we have a very good community of learning how to work together, and we have leaders in their positions right now that do try to work with us very well, and I think we can continue that.
Thank you. This next question, I believe, will start with Scott. Is that correct?
Yes.
Just finished with Mara, okay, trying to keep track of this. Just trying to start it off. There's a number of questions here regarding the future of Fargo and basically the priorities that are before us. And some of the questions, several of the questions deal with what should be our major priorities coming up before us. And one specifically asks, "Should flood control continue to be the top priority for Fargo?" Or with Fargo's other vast infrastructure needs regarding growth, et cetera, what do you see as the next priority, top priority, I guess, is what they want to know, beyond flood control?
Thank you. I think that's the critical question around this election. My focus for this election is on long-term planning, including infrastructure, delivery of city services, and permanent flood protection. To the issue of what, I guess, partly how that question was phrased, you know, either or, I think it's both. And if you look at the largest growth area in the Fargo budget, it's debt services, but that's bonding, you know, that's public infrastructure, and that's flood protection. And I think that that is critical to the long-term vitality of our community in our region. If we're going to continue to grow, we need good public infrastructure, and Fargo's delivered that. You know, when I started out in 2000 on my run for the county commission, I wasn't an expert on county commission. So, I, or county government. So, I went to all the different department heads, and I learned county government from them, and I was impressed, quite frankly, at the work that that current commission had done. And when I have been making my way through the city departments, I think the citizens of Fargo can be proud of the department heads and the full-time staff that they have working on these important issues. And as it relates to flood protection, and I'm going to run out of time, so I'll probably wait till I get the bell here because it's that important, the internal protection, if we look at even not only because of the events that we've seen in recent years, but also the flood insurance program and how that's going to change. When FEMA remaps and the flood plain actually is increased, it's going to be a requirement of almost 1,900 new homes that are going to be required to have flood insurance. And the long-term stability of the National Flood Insurance Program, they're grandfathering that program in, but there's going to be an accelerator on there where it's going to become exponentially more expensive. And one of the things on the diversion authority that we did with Comprehensive Flood Control and the Corps did in their hydrology work was, they've said that what we saw in 2009, that wasn't a hundred-year flood. They think 41.1 is what, a hundred-year. We saw a 50-year flood. And why that's critical, FEMA's looking at that. And so, long-term, if our flood mapping has to go to 41.1, we can't build levees and flood walls high enough within the city to meet that requirement. That would impact almost 20,000 properties within the city. Internal flood protection, the diversion, and we continue to need to build out our infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you. And John Strand, how do you respond?
Well, initially, I'll respond with what the people have said already, then I will embellish it some. The Go 2030 Plan, which involved several thousand folks, had a lot of feedback, and that was on many fronts. What they listed as the priorities were flood protection, of course, infill and strong neighborhoods, arts and culture, bikes, bike paths and walking, and quality design standards. I would translate a lot of that into, especially in the context of Fargo's growth, in the context of North Dakota's growth, I would say a need is managed growth. We need to stay on top of the horse that we're on and do our best at going forward. I did a survey online, just curious what people think, and it's all over the board, but this is what people think, managing the litter, parking, landlords run amok, tenant rights, riverfront development, improve our bike paths. You know, in Cambridge, England, they put phosphorescent light, material into their bike paths, and they glow at night, and they're absolutely just beautiful, things like that. Keep improving our downtown, liquor license restructuring, public transit improvements, public art center, tax incentives for film, like Albuquerque does, so the movie Fargo, for example, could maybe be partially filmed here. A free workout wellness center, no more building in flood planes. What I think it gets down to is the people. And people living here having a sense of pride, having a sense of respect, having a sense of dignity, accepting people, respecting the needs and wants and desires and challenges of others, especially those at risk. So, the people's what the bottom line is, but all this other stuff kind of contributes to that, and it's a culture that we develop and foster that's important.
Thank you. And Mr. Bennett?
We have many needs, therefore, there can't be only one priority. There needs to be many top priorities in a city the size of Fargo. And these priorities have to be related to whatever is necessary to protect families, their property, and their future.
Thank you. And Mr. Mahoney?
At the mayor's debate or report to the community, there was a survey done at that group, and 65% of the people there said flood control is number one on their mind. The Go 2030 project came out and talked about neighborhood infill, our economy, energy, arts and culture. I was just down in Sioux Falls, and it was kind of fun to walk around their downtown area and see how much they've put into arts, and how the arts have rejuvenated in many of those areas. It's kind of fun to watch. This year alone, we have $250 million going to be spent on infrastructure. This community is really putting a lot into the community. Now, some people get concerned because we always wait for the diversion, but the city is always thinking ahead, and we will continue to build and get the dykes ready regardless of when the diversion comes in. We cannot protect for a 500-year event, but we will be as best we can to protect. The last flood we had last week, or last year when we put out sandbags, I could tell the fatigue in the community. We asked for volunteers to come out and put in sandbags. And other than my son jumping up and down saying, "This is fun, Dad," most of us said, "This isn't fun anymore." So, we had city employees, engineers, firemen, those were the people out on the dykes this year putting in sandbags because a lot of the neighbors were tired. The neighbors that did came said, "Tim, I'm getting tired of this." So, I do know that that is one of the areas we have to do. But I also agree with Vern is that we've got a lot of stuff going on. There's a lot of priorities that are going on in the group, and you almost have to keep kind of watching everything that's happening to make sure it's gone in a good fashion. Development is moving so fast that if you don't keep your fingers on it, you will have some adverse things happen. You may not have the arterials right, so a fire can get in there if there's a fire in that neighborhood. So, everything has to be looked at, but the great thing about the community is we have growth, we have things happening, and we have a lot of energetic people that want to address those issues, and I think we'll continue to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mara Brust?
Thank you. As a few of the other candidates have mentioned, the citizens have already voted and said what their priorities are with the Go 2030. It's important we address all of those. Flood protection is important. Fargo needs permanent flood protection. But they also talked about arts and culture, a thriving downtown, walkability, and infill. It's important that we look farther into the future and create a community that people want to build, want to live in. When I was in high school, all the young people were, "I can't wait to get out of Fargo once I graduated." And then I left for law school, and when I moved back about three years ago, there's been this very significant shift in the energy of my peers. People are excited to live here. People are excited to move here. And I think it's important that we continue to build a community that's going to retain our young talent and to attract new talent. We have a thriving startup community right now, an entrepreneurial community, and it's important that we support those efforts. There is a recent article from the Fargo-Morehead Greater Economic Development Corporation that noted, "While agriculture has gone down in our economy, the technology community has more than made up for that." And it's important that we continue to foster those new economic developments and build our economic strength into the future.
Thank you. And Mr. Wagner? No, I started with you, didn't I?
Let's keep track of you.
There's a lot of us here.
Okay. Next question, we'll start with Mr. Strand. Again, many good ones here. There is a question here about growth, Fargo's growth. We've touched on it a little bit, and a couple of questions, they're similar but different kinds of perceptions. One question I asked, "Would you like to know, we would like to know your position on both commercial and residential growth and expansion of Fargo, and most of Fargo development has been to the south and west over the past 15 years. What efforts should the city take to improve older parts of the city outside of downtown? I am particularly interested in North Fargo." And then, just kind of key to that, not to expand this too much, but this person says, "We appreciate the old Fargo plan of neighborhoods organized around schools and parks. Can we preserve strong neighborhoods?" So, growth, commercial, and/or residential, and location, and what's happening to the old parts. What can we do for the old parts? What a large piece of work there.
Interestingly, this is probably what my primary message is, is about the inner city neighborhoods and the condition of our inner-city neighborhoods, and our intention or not to honor what we've already got. I know growth is good, and we like new, and we like bigger, and we like better, but there are trade-offs. When I used to come from my little town of Crystal and stayed down on Seventh Avenue South with relatives near Agassi, that was just something. Now, when I go through that neighborhood, I see a neighborhood in disrepair more than I ever envisioned it would ever be. And yet, it's the heart of the city. We have a lot of the city that needs our attention and our focus. There are, when we go, and going through the schools, facilities process this last year with the school district, we heard loud and clear from the people that we want to keep the neighborhood schools intact. We want to keep the neighborhoods intact. And there were a lot of lessons that we could glean from that. When you have a school already in place, you don't have to build new infrastructure. You don't need new gutters, new roads, new sewer, new water. You don't need special assessments, new costs for expansion. They're already there. We just have to help spruce up the homes there and encourage the people and come up with incentives to do that. When we build down new south, there are immense costs. I believe I've heard that the cost of the, to the community on the books, is about $400 million in specials out there that are hopefully going to be paid, but it's a risk. There's a risk to that. It stretches our services, our abilities to provide fire protection, our abilities to provide transportation. It challenges the ability to be even walkable. So, this is a real important one, and I'm glad the question was asked.
Okay, thank you. Vern Bennett?
I'll try to add something to what John said. You did a very good job. First of all, I think we have to be appreciative of the fact that we do have growth rather than decline, because there are serious problems with decline that we do not have. And so, we have to appreciate the challenges that we have, and I would prefer to look at them as challenges rather than problems. We do have growth, and we have to look at downtown. Right now, of course, our density downtown is, what is it, four people per acre. And of course, we'd like to get that up to eight or nine people per acre. So, there's a lot of room downtown for housing, for different economic situations. And we do need economic development that takes a look at mixed housing. Why I say mixed housing is, mixed housing means that there are apartment houses that are reconstructed that take care of higher and lower income brackets. That's one concept that's needed in downtown areas. As far as going out of town, we have to be careful that developers do not get too enthusiastic about building and get too far ahead of the city. We have to watch out for leapfrogging and things of that nature. We have to be careful of streets that are produced by private developers and then figuring out who repairs them later in life. And so, as far as development is concerned, it's a privilege to have growth, and we just have to be smart in order to take care of the problems and solutions that are necessary.
Thank you. Tim Mahoney, your thoughts?
Renaissance Zone is a really good example of what can happen in an area in which you can have some refurbishment and regrowth. When we look at the impacts of the Renaissance Zone, our tax base has increased to $1.5 million just by all the different things that have happened downtown. If you talk to some of the business owners, they're not too happy about that because their taxable value went up, but the reality is that we did improvement in that area. We have Community Development Committee that does look at end growth in the aging neighborhoods and what to do with those areas. And the police department will tell you, "If we get a bunch of broken windows in a neighborhood, that's actually bad." And what begins to happen is the lights set in, and you have problems. So, it's a priority of the group to make sure all our neighbors are kept up, and we have neighborhood committees that work together to keep their neighborhoods up. The city does have a variety of places to grow. We're long and narrow, and that has got quite a challenge as far as for city services and what we do. There is a possibility of some expansion north and some expansion to the south, the west. We're confined a little bit about West Fargo when we get too far west, and we have some confines of where we go. When John talked about buildable areas and floodable plains, you can't really build those areas anymore. We've lost some of our ability to grow because of just the different issues with the flood and diversion and what we have to do. There's no question the city is behind whatever we can do to continue to make the whole city healthy, the older neighborhoods, the new neighborhoods, what goes on in those areas, and how we can help to enhance those areas. Affordable housing is a big issue as well, and we ask, look at that. When people are getting older, you know, sometimes we didn't expect people to live 90. You know, if they all kind of would die on average at 72, we wouldn't have this problem, Vern. But, you know, people are living longer, so what happens is, is you do have to have affordable housing. And if you don't have affordable housing, it makes it hard for a lot of the elderly people on restricted incomes. So, overall, the city is looking at that, the planning department is looking at that, and we'll do everything we can do to make this a livable community for every variety of people regardless of your income, regardless of what you have the ability to do. So, we want to make it a community that welcomes people into our area. Am I at my time?
Thank you. And Mara Brust?
I was a fourth-generation Northsider. I really appreciate this question. I think that maintaining a strong sense of neighborhood is essential to retaining the sense of pride and community that defines Fargo, and we don't want to lose that as we grow. I think it's essential that we maintain all of our parks and schools instead of just... focusing on new development. It's also important that we support efforts to improve our existing homes and to promote infill in all neighborhoods. The Renaissance Zone is an excellent example of how we've been able to promote that in downtown, and we should look at other solutions for other neighborhoods to continue that momentum. Thank you.
Thank you. And Scott Wagner.
First of all, I just want to ask the age thing. They're talking about blaming, can we blame you, Dr. Mahoney, since are you contributing to the longevity of people's lives? I'd say thank you for that. I think that's a good thing. You know, I think that the city, quite frankly, needs to take a holistic approach to, when we talk about neighborhoods. People are consumers, and I think giving choices to people where they live and what they want to buy. One of the things that you see in downtown, I've got friends that just, they purchased homes when the Renaissance financing came available and, you know, rehabbed turn-of-the-century houses from the, not the two thousands, but from the nineteenth century to the twentieth century, and, you know, that's added value to those neighborhoods. But, you know, when you, I live on the north side of Fargo, my house is fifty-three years old, there's a life expectancy, you know, of infrastructure where it does need to be replaced, and so you don't completely mitigate that because you live in an older area. But I think that we need to be appealing to many different people, whether you want to live downtown and you've got that type of housing, whether it's condo living, or if you want to live in an historic neighborhood. Also, new growth. Fargo is pretty well-defined. When you look, I think, as Commissioner Mahoney indicated, you've got the Red River to the east, that's a natural boundary, you've got Harwood, the airport to the north for the most part, and you've got west Fargo, and then Horace to the west. Fargo was really defined, I think, in terms of where it can grow, so you're not stretching out in four different directions, and I think that can create some orderly, organized growth. And sitting down talking to the planning commission, or excuse me, the planning department, you know, I think they've done a great job, and I think Fargo has grown in an orderly manner. When you look at other communities roughly our size, Green Bay, Wisconsin, Rochester, Minnesota, you know, you're seeing communities of a little over a hundred thousand, and their density levels are, you know, per square mile, Fargo's about twenty-two-hundred per square mile, they're at two-thousand to twenty-six-hundred. You know, the concern, I think, when you see sprawl is cities that don't have extraterritorial authority in states. Fargo has a four-mile ET, which allows it to plan and get ahead of a lot of those issues. So, I think we need to have the type of neighborhoods that consumers want. Otherwise, quite frankly, they're going to move to Moorhead and west Fargo, and I think it's great that they grow, but I think Fargo ought to be in that mix and can be and should be. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We're getting close to our end time, but I think we'll pick another question here before we do our wrap-up. And this question, I think, is very pertinent to our situation in North Dakota, and the question, I guess it goes first to Vern Bennett. Are we getting appropriate support from the legislature, the North Dakota State Legislature, for the issues that we have in Fargo vis-à-vis our flooding, et cetera, et cetera? And I guess a corollary to that is, what could you or the council do to improve that relationship?
Well, this falls into the area of working successfully across political boundaries, and I think that my experience with the North Dakota Legislature has been excellent. I've found that any time that I've spent time with groups of legislators and traveled to Bismarck and had meetings, they have been successful. I've been very supportive of the North Dakota Legislature. I think they look very favorably upon Fargo. I think that Fargo must stretch itself and pay more attention to western North Dakota and cooperate, and through that type of cooperation, we'll even improve the good past that we have for the future of our city.
Thank you. And Tim Mahoney.
I think we've had a good relationship with legislative people. They've been very supportive of us in the flood control. They put up the money they had to put up, and they, but they're better than the federal government putting up the money they should put up. So, we've had a great relationship with legislative body. Sometimes there are disagreements that are held that the paper likes to put out there, but beyond that, we usually get along pretty well. The governor is very supportive of us. We do spend a lot of time, Pat Zarwell spends a lot of time with the staff and legislative people to try to work out what we need and what happens. It's interesting, we inadvertently get some benefits from that at times as well. So, when the legislative body passes certain laws that were meant to help the western part of the state in infrastructure, because of our size, we get an extra check as well. So, some of that stuff inadvertently helps us in that regard. Williston reached out to our planning commission, came out and tried to see what we could do. Minot, when they had their flood, we went up and tried to help them out with the things that they need. We have relationships throughout the state and the city of Fargo that we help out. For many of the citizens, the reality is, we're the Fargo finest. Our police department is second to none, our fire department is second to none, and so we are very much helpful throughout the state in different issues that come up, and it's very important for us to have a good relationship with legislative body. This last year, we spent a fair amount of time out there, and we did get a little bit nervous about some of the flood money. OXPO was funded separately, which turns out to be a good deal because now when the other bodies get involved, that is a separate project from the diversion project. So, that has turned out to be a wise move by somebody somewhere. Overall, our commission has to work across the aisle with everybody, and they have to understand it, and because we're the biggest city in the state, it's very important. We're oftentimes the leaders of what goes on and help guide the state is what happens, and that takes a lot of hard work and effort to make sure everybody understands our position. But we're very thankful for the help they give us over the years. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mara Brust.
Thank you. I think it's very important that we collaborate with all branches and levels of government. We're lucky to live in a state that really has a sense of pride and holds together when one of our cities is in trouble. The state has been supportive financially when it comes to flood control issues and when we've faced events like two thousand nine. The Renaissance Zone is another example of a great state initiative that's been hugely beneficial to Fargo and really shaped the future of Fargo, and I think it's important that Fargo continues to be a leader in leading North Dakota into the future.
Thank you. And Scott Wagner.
Thank you. I really feel that this is a strong suit of mine that I could bring some real value to the city Fargo Commission. During my time as a county commissioner, I was really active statewide on legislative matters. I was the former president of the North Dakota County Commissioners Association and chairman of their legislative committee, and thirty percent of the revenue that operates Fargo, primarily through state aid and highway funding, the Highway Distribution Fund, that funding's critical. I think that relationship, flood control, critical with the city of Fargo. So, I think the priorities that we have at a local level, and one thing that I'll say that I'll see that's kind of uniquely developing early on in the two thousands, when I went out to Bismarck to talk about issues that, of growth, it was somewhat of a foreign concept to some of our legislators from other parts of the state for, you know, unfortunately, we're seeing decline. Oil impact in the west has changed that, and so you're seeing communities in Williston, Watford City, Dickinson, that are dealing with these issues, Minot, and there's a parallel there. It may not be oil in the east, but they're seeing the issues that we deal with, and I think there's a direct benefit when we work together. One thing that I would look forward to is working with the League of Cities. When I was active with the Association of Counties, we worked, collaborated extensively with the League of Cities in a couple areas, not only in good public policy, where we can work together on funding priorities, but keeping the integrity of local government. You know, I was the lead person that testified in front of Senate appropriations in two thousand seven when we had the CAPS bill. I've been a strong supporter of local government. We were able to defeat that, keep revenue authority at the local level. I think the best decisions on local government are made by our local citizens and the people that they elect locally. I was a strong opponent of Measure Two and spoke out on that issue and worked with the Association of County, League of Cities, and a number of other organizations to keep that authority local. So, the legislature's important, that relationship's important for the city of Fargo in our region, and I've got a strong background in that, and I'd like to bring that to the city of Fargo. Thank you.
Thank you. And John Strand.
The question, are we, are we getting appropriate support from the legislature? I'm going to say yes and no. I think we have some essential infrastructure support with flood protection and things like that, but personally, I have a lot of disappointments in the legislative actions and processes, and I just, I just need to be honest about that. You know, I, it surfaced this week, for example, that North Dakota has the highest death rate in the country, second year running, and that's two-year-old information. We need people to fight for our people. We need people to fight for safety in the job site. We have thirty-two-hundred, we've escalated from seven or eight-hundred a few years ago to thirty-two-hundred filings of claims and deaths and injuries at WSI. We need to fight for the people, and the notion that our legislature is meeting every other year and doesn't see any reason to have another session this year with the explosion going on, the boom, I call it a tsunami unleashed upon the state. Yes, we're fortunate, but we need to manage this for the people as well as for the communities and for the whole state. I'm from a little tiny town, I mentioned Crystal, but my home area is drying, dying on the vine. Not all of North Dakota's booming. There's twenty or three, three or so counties that are dwindling while others are exploding. We need to manage the infrastructure needs of the places where there's boom, and we need to support the places that aren't booming. I'm not always happy with our legislature when it comes down to people issues, frankly. I wish that we were a little more ahead of the curve with fighting for people's rights and honoring all people, every son, every daughter, every mother, every father, every brother, every sister. But this is a nonpartisan position on the commission, and we're not supposed to be political here, so I'll do my best just simply to fight for what's right, fight for the people and fight for what is for the greater public good.
Okay, thank you. That's the, kind of come to the end of our time for questions, and so we'll move now to a final statement from each of you, lasting about a minute. I'm going to paraphrase some questions, though, that I would ask you maybe to focus on, and their concerns are, what is it, what is unique about yourself as an individual that you bring to this city government position? How does that set you apart or make you an important addition to the city commission? So, if you could address that, that would be great, and so I'll start again with John Bennett.
Thank you. Basically, what the taxpayers are doing is hiring leadership, and to me, leadership is serving the needs of others. Leadership is helping others become leaders, and leadership is hiring great people, giving them the training they need, the tools they need, and getting out of their way to verify and trust them. Leadership is looking at employees and recognizing that they are rich untapped resources and that we need to get the ideas and thoughts of employees on the docket, because that's where some of the great ideas are that will bring us into the future in a positive way. I'm one that attacks the problem rather than the person, and I'm proud of that. My wife would say, "Vern, I don't think there's a person in Fargo you dislike," and I've known her for sixty years, and she's right. I like every person, and I'll continue that way, serving the needs of Fargo people.
Thank you. And Tim Mahoney.
When I took this position a few years ago, it was always hard to know which way to vote or what to do, who you're going to make happy, who you're going to make unhappy. And over time, you learn that what you need to do for the people is best, to vote for what's in their best interest. You have to weigh the good and the bad of a decision and what it does for the community. I think my strength is I see people from all walks of life. I do things that are part of life, part of death, part of a variety of things, but I keep my focus on what we should keep our focus on, and we want a vibrant, vibrant community, a safe community, a place people want to raise their children, grow up in and stay in. And please, people are coming back into the community. It's always been my dream that people not only would grow up here, go to school, but also would remain here and become our citizens, and it's with great joy I serve in this position, and I'm humbled by what people do for us and what they have done for us over the years. So, I ask to have the support of the citizens of Fargo again and city commission, and I'll continue to serve you as I have been serving you in the past. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mara Brust, your statement.
Thank you. My legal education and experience has taught me to be objective, to look at all sides of the issue and consider all relevant information, and I promise that if I'm your next city commissioner, that I'm going to look at all viewpoints and do all my research before I make a decision about what's best for Fargo, and then I'll be a zealous advocate for our city. I think this is a pivotal time in Fargo's history, and I think we deserve a new perspective and a new voice in local government. As amazing as our city already is, I want to see it reach its full potential, and I believe with my work ethic and intelligence and creativity, I can make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you. And Scott Wagner.
Kind of on a personal note, I guess, what I bring to this commission. For me, I was nineteen when I started my own business. I knew if I was going to college, I was going to pay my own way, and so I learned from a young age, hard work, and I've got a service-oriented business that's in its twenty-fifth year this year in the Fargo-Moorhead area. I know public service and constituent service on twelve years on the county commission. I came on the board at thirty, and that's pretty young for an elected official, and it taught me a lot, and I grew as a person, I think, during those twelve years. One thing that I've always done is treat people with fairness, respect, but I've also been able to make hard decisions, and I've taken a lot of leadership positions over those twelve years to advance issues that were important to our common good, and I'll bring that hard work, that dedication to the citizens of Fargo's, do it in a collaborative approach, and be fair, objective, do my homework for the citizens. They deserve no less than that. So, thanks again to the League of Women Voters for the opportunity to be here and for the people that came to listen and those that'll be watching on public access. I think this is a great venue, and thank you for setting this up.
Thank you. And John Strand.
I think if I was to describe myself, I would say I'm a fighter, but, you know, it's not just fighting and standing up for people and things that you believe in or that other people believe in. You, you have to have a sense of, a little bit of irrational optimism sometimes, you know? You've got to think out of the box and be willing to be creative and be willing to find new mixes for the ingredients you already have with which to work. You, you need to also mediate, you know, and bring people together to a solution you can all live with and go forward with and embrace and champion. So, maybe one of the most unique things about me is I'm a member of the fourth estate. I come from the world of watching the government for the people, looking at that and reporting to the people, and so I'm kind of a watchdog, but when you're at the table, that, you can't shed that mindset of who you are and what you bring as a skill set and a mindset, but that's what I do. I watch for the people, so I'd be honored to serve if I get that opportunity at this level as well.
Well, thank you, and thank you to all of the candidates for this excellent presentation and to you, the audience, for attending, and we also want to thank Channel Twelve on which the, for the media coverage that we're going to be having, and I think we ought to give some applause to our candidates. Thank you.